Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council meeting of September 11th, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arius. Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, and it is a pleasure to welcome all of you today. It's good to see many people here engaging in the civic process. I know we have students from Bakersfield College, from Professor Holmes' class. Welcome to all of you. On September 11th, courage, sacrifice, and selflessness triumphed over terror. Today, on the 23rd anniversary of 9/11, we remember the courage of the firefighters, law enforcement officers, and the countless civilians who gave their lives while saving others. We remember the sacrifice of flight attendant Betty Ann Ong, the first person to warn authorities that America was under attack. Our hearts go out to all who lost loved ones. We remember the children whose parents didn't come home. And it's with great gratitude that we remember the selfless men and women who put the well-being of others first. They put the safety of others first. May we grow in our support, in our gratitude for all who continue to fight for freedom and uphold the foundational truths on which our great country was built. Would you all stand and join me in a moment of silence, please, which will be followed then by a prayer and flag salute? Heavenly Father, today, we're grateful for sacrifice. We're so grateful for those who sacrificed for others, for the brave men and women who didn't think of themselves, but they put others first. We remember our firefighters, the law enforcement, all the civilians who saved others not thinking of themselves. And today, we remember their families, their loved ones, and we remember all of those who continue to fight for freedom. We're so grateful for all of our law enforcement, all of our first responders, even today. And it is in the name of the one who paid the ultimate sacrifice for the world that we pray. Amen. Please join us in saluting the flag. Chief Frando will lead us.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in your removal from the meeting and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is presentations. At the request of Mayor Go, the order of presentations has changed. Our first presentation is 4B, Proclamation to Jeremy Tobias, Community Action Partnership of Kern, Chief Executive Officer, Callie Lowry, CAP-K Food Bank Program Administrator, Louis Gill, CAP-K Chief Program Officer, and Savannah Oates, Advocacy and PR Manager, declaring September 2024 as Hunger Action Month in Bakersfield.
Well, welcome, Jeremy and Savannah. Thank you, CAP-K, for your collaborative efforts to create a future where no one in Bakersfield, no one in Kern County must worry about where their next meal will come from. Access to healthy and sustainable foods has become increasingly an urgent issue across our nation, and now is the time to act. We can volunteer, we can promote social media campaigns, participate in donations, and attend events to ensure that our community has the food needed to thrive. And it's my honor to issue this proclamation. Whereas September has been designated as Hunger Action Month to bring awareness to food insecurity in our communities, enlisting the public support of the movement to take action to end hunger, whereas 44 million people, including more than 13 million children, face food insecurity in the United States. And whereas more than 144,000 residents in Kern County, with approximately 22% of them being children, did not know where their next meal would come from. And whereas organizations, including the wonderful Community Food Center at the CAP-K Food Bank, are committed to working alongside partners to fight food insecurity in Kern County, whereas with over 200,000 interactions with community members a month, Wonderful Company Food Center at the CAP-K Food Bank was able to distribute over 20 million pounds of food in more than 200 pantry and commodity locations in Kern County. Now therefore, I, Karen Kago, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as Hunger Action Month in our city, and call upon all citizens to support food banks across the country, including CAP-K Food Bank, by attending events, raising awareness to help end hunger in Bakersfield and Kern County. It's my honor to be able to present this to Jeremy Tobias. Thank you so much, Jeremy, for your wonderful support of our community.
Thank you, Mayor Go, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. I'm pleased to be here to bring awareness of Hunger Action Month here in our community. Bakersfield and Kern County have very high levels of food insecurity, and the CAP-K Food Bank is on the front lines of that struggle. Since last year, the CAP-K Food Bank client engagements have more than doubled, from about 100,000 monthly to close to 200,000 monthly interactions. The Food Bank distributes 1.8 million pounds of food every month. Serving a community of our size only works with strong partnerships. The Food Bank utilizes 150 local partner organizations and over 200 total distribution sites to serve our county, with about 70% of those in Bakersfield. We are proud of our important partnership with the City of Bakersfield on many endeavors. One thing that is important to point out, and I think it's important for people to know this, is what our typical client is like that we serve. It's not so much the person on the street corner with a sign, although we serve them, and that's important. It's really the working poor, those with low-wage jobs, sometimes more than one job, doing the tough, blue-collar, labor-intensive work that is vital for our society and our economy. But unfortunately, they see most of their paycheck go towards rent and utilities. So I think it's important to note that the Food Bank plays a vital role with this community in helping them fill the gaps and keeping them in their homes and off the streets. Again, I want to thank you for allowing me the time to speak tonight, and thank you for this proclamation, bringing awareness. I'd like to turn it over to our CAP-K Outreach Manager, Savannah Oates.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to come up and thank some of you guys for attending our press conference, and I think the biggest thing to put in conception here is it's Hunger Action Month. Action is the key word here. There's tons of activities that each of you and your constituents can get involved with. One of the biggest ones that they'll kind of mention a little bit later with the fair is the Feed the Need Food Drive that we do annually. This year, it'll be September 24th from 4:00 to 11:00 PM. Any individual that brings in six cans gets into the fair for free. We encourage you to come out, volunteer, grab some cans from some of your individuals from your areas, have some fun, meet some community members. If you're interested in volunteering at our Food Bank on the third Saturday, we do that every single month. We did present you guys with Hunger Fighting shirts, yard signs, and pins to wear throughout the month. It's in the back in the caucus room. But if you're interested in getting involved in any way, you can go to capkfoundation.org/ham ironically 24. Thank you.
One other thing I want to give a shout out to the Kern County Fair and their board. They give up their gate one night for us at our Food Bank. They offer free admittance with the donation of six cans of food, so they give that up for us one night at the fair, and that's a big deal. Thank you to the Kern County Fair Board.
While you're taking a photo, I just want to commend CAP-K for all the wonderful work that they do for our community. I actually, as Casey the Bull comes in and steals the show here. If I can, just share, I'm part of a group that has a regular food distribution in East Bakersfield on Niles of Monterey, and we serve well over 200 families each and every month, and we've been doing that consistently for the last five years. And we would not be able to do it if it wasn't for CAP-K Food Bank and for the wonderful partnership that the community has established. And so I see it firsthand. The need is only growing in our community in East Bakersfield, and many of my constituents really benefit from the services that you provide. So on behalf of all of them, I just want to thank all of you for your work.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentation 4A, Proclamation to Casey the Bull and Kern County Fair Chief Executive Officer Mike Alcott, declaring September 18, 2024 through September 29, 2024, as Kern County Fair Days in Bakersfield.
It's that time of the year again where families come together to enjoy all that the Kern County Fair has to offer. Thank you, Mike Alcott. Thank you, Casey, for being here tonight, and it's my honor to read this proclamation. The Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, California, has officially proclaimed September 18 through September 29, 2024, as Kern County Fair Days in our city. In honor of the great annual Kern County Fair, in recognition of the visitors who will pass through the gates of the fairgrounds to celebrate the wonderful bounty of Kern County, in recognition of the visitors who will also enjoy the talents of our residents in this autumn institution, in recognition of the opportunity the event offers families to spend time together, in recognition of the continued support and outstanding efforts of local businesses in our community, and in honor of the great Kern County Fair where residents can treat themselves to a fun-filled time and discover the magic. It's my honor to be able to present this to you. Casey, thank you. I'm going to give it to Mike, though. There we go.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, and thank you, City Manager. I also want to thank first for allowing the BPD to serve us at the fairgrounds. They are incredible to work with. Officer Dossi, Officer Birchtoold, and all the officers out there, they've been incredible to work with, and they keep us safe, and we appreciate your efforts on that part. I do want to thank Jeremy, I don't know if he's still here, but we do give about 50,000 pounds of food in one night for CAP-K, which is incredible for their Food Bank, so that they can help serve those that have food insecurity in our community. And the Board of Directors are very happy to be able to do that and continue to want to do that every year. So thank you to CAP-K for their support, and thank you for your support. This year, we have an incredible fair. Our numbers seem to be trending right on track, so we should have close to 400,000 people here. They'll be here for the 12 days of fair, mostly on the weekends, so you might want to shy away from the weekends. But we do have, almost every vendor is full. People are coming from out of the county, the food vendors wanting to be at our fair. We're packed. We're packed with events, like we have sea lions, we have dinosaurs, we have great entertainment this year, some oldies my age and some that are younger, a lot of different entertainment, especially on the stages. We have a lot of community acts on the stages, which is from the local community here, which is great, to what we see. And I just want to thank you again. I can't thank you enough for all the support you give us at the fairgrounds. It is a lot that we have been trying to do, the board and I, to modify the fairgrounds. You have done a great job with the streets. Streets are incredible over there. We are just trying to beautify the fairgrounds, which we've done on Union and parts of Ming. We put up fencing, we're going to do more asphalting. Man, is asphalt expensive. We might have to hit up the city and see if they can help us with that, but asphalt in the parking lots to try to mitigate the dust and on the roads and things like that. But thank you again for all your support, and I hope to see you all out at the fairgrounds. Thank you.
Public Statements.
Thank you. In keeping with the council's resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray on the counter next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at a later time, so please listen carefully. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we have received 13 speaker cards for items not on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, and would you please call them?
The first speaker is Harry Love, followed by Maria Keones and Kev.
Thank you, and for the record, Councilmember Arius has entered.
Good evening, Mayor Go and members of the council. My name's Harry Love, and I'm here as a retired history teacher, because history is important on the topic I'd like to bring up. I came here 57 years ago. For many of you, that's a long time, 1967. Came here to teach at Foothill High School. I'm from Los Angeles, the other side, down there, those evil people people talk about. And I came here to teach, and I drove across the bridge on Chester, and then I drove across the bridge in my Mustang, by the way. I noticed a sign. Sign said, "No diving." Sign is still there. I looked over the edge, and all I saw was sand. And when I followed my first students, I said, "Is there something I don't know you need to be told not to dive off this bridge?" And they said, "Well, we never see water in there." And I said, "Really? I didn't know that. It's called a river, but I guess it's just a riverbed." So that was my first thing. So when I was teaching history and those things, all those years, I also noticed that the river had other uses or abuses. There used to be sand drag races on Saturday morning, and I'd hear them. I lived off Stockdale Highway, and I hear about 6:00 in the morning, sand. In other words, that riverbed became a motorized place. And then, not too far afterwards, I also heard other vehicles out there, but they were large vehicles, and they were taking sand out of the riverbed for construction. So that river, that riverbed, became an economic or a toy thing, but not a river. So I'm very concerned, the fact that we've had water in there for the last two years, and now we don't. And I think it's very, because as I look at history, you have a role as a custodian for the people of Bakersfield, on behalf of those people to keep that asset running as a river.
Mr. Love, your time is up. Would you bring your comments to our calls, please?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Love. Next speaker, please.
Maria Keones.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. In the indigenous paradigm, there's a direct correlation to how we treat the earth, to how we treat our waterways, to how we treat the most vulnerable people in our society. In Bakersfield today, our rivers are drying up, the fish are dying, the wildlife that depends on the river is dying, the earth is consistently pillaged for oil uses. We see our tax dollars continue to fund the genocide in Gaza. I'm here to speak on behalf of the river, of our wildlife. I'm here to speak on behalf of the children whose parents never come home. I'm asking you to do your civic responsibility to care for our rivers and waterways, because all life is sacred in every form. I'm asking you to care about the ongoing genocide in Gaza. Even this week, there was a massacre involving 100 people in the only designated safe zone in Moawasi, Gaza. We come time and time again, and we appeal to the heart. We come with all of our hearts and all of our strength to ask you to care for our environment, to care for our rivers. Our rivers are not for sale. Our rivers should not be siphoned or sold to other counties. This has been happening for the past 500 years. I'm not sure if you know, but the valley used to be a marshland, and we stand on Yoke's land. And so even as an indigenous woman, I want to honor the Yoke's people, the animals, the waterways that died because we did not protect this environment. I ask you today to right the wrongs of history. I ask you, as people, I know some of you declare that you're people of faith, I ask you to be decent human beings.
Thank you, Ms. Keones. Next speaker. Just a reminder, just a reminder to the audience that applause is not allowed during this part. I know you're passionate, and just a reminder. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Kev.
Please introduce yourself.
Hey, Council. It's been a while since I've given a comment, right? Not that long, but I can still say that at its core, the way you manage the city is inhumane. And to say it flat out, the drying of the Kern River was a mass murder on the local wildlife. But what else can I expect from not even a council, just individuals, who wouldn't even condemn the massacres of human beings in current time, where death like that doesn't even faze you? Because for whatever reason, why was drying the river your solution? Why cut the trees in downtown at all? Why avoid talks on attendance right to council or not fund it well enough when you'll fund a rapid-response team to remove encampments? You'll spend a combined millions of dollars on police for mass surveillance systems for surplus, not regular supply, but surplus ammunition out of anything but the actual police budget? Then again, any of your good actions are to show face or comply with law. You should be mobilizing to systematically uplift communities in the city. Like, why does the majority of our funds come from social programs? Why do they come from state or federal grants? Why do we have to wait for infrastructure to fail before it becomes fixed or even the thought of getting fixed? Why do we have to experience 115-degree-plus heat waves for you to see your environmental impacts? See, it could be so much easier for the people in this city to live easily, but your priorities say otherwise. And outside of saying free Palestine, Sudan, and Congo, and those oppressed by imperialism, I'll say free our ecosystems, our wildlife, our rivers, our lakes, and our land which is exploited and pillaged for profit and war.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ray McDeish, followed by Auntie Lauer.
Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon. I am Dr. Ray McNish, freshwater ecologist and associate professor at California State University, Bakersfield, from the Department of Biology. 3,033, this is the number of dead fish, which include the native Sacramento suckers that my students and I have documented in the Kern River over the past seven days, specifically throughout the BISA, the Bakersfield Environmental Studies area, which is approximately 1.5 river mile long. My research team at CSUB has been conducting weekly monitoring in the Kern River from the Stockdale Bridge up to Hart Park over the past two months. We have documented multiple mass fish death events since August 28th. The rapid decline of fish populations in the river, in conjunction with substantial reductions of water availability in the river channel, is exceptionally concerning, especially from a scientific and personal point of view. I implore the leaders of our community to seek and apply alternative methods in the future to balance societal needs and flood control with supporting the river ecosystem. One potential alternative method that could be included is incorporating a river bypass to dry out a subsection of the river channel where maintenance activities can be planned and conducted. This would divert water and relevant aquatic wildlife to a downstream location, therefore minimally disrupting the biological integrity of the river. This strategy, among other strategies, will help support the river ecosystem while still maintaining and meeting the safety and recreational needs of our community. Thank you for your time and consideration. I have supplied a copy of what I've just said to you.
Thank you, Dr. McNish. Next speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Mayor Go and City Council members and city staff. So my name is Auntie Lauer. I'm also a professor at California State University, Bakersfield, and I was able to obtain a copy of the Kern River Canal Backup Veer Reconstruction Project and the Streambed Alteration Agreement between the City of Bakersfield, represented by Daniel Maldonado and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. So in this agreement, it says that the California Department of Fish and Wildlife has determined that the project could substantially adversely affect existing fish or wildlife resources and has included protective measures on pages 3 to 10. Okay, and further, it says that the permit, which is the City of Bakersfield, has reviewed this agreement and accepts its terms and conditions, including the protective measures to protect fish and wildlife resources. The California Department of Fish and Wildlife Officer who signed this document was Julie Vance. But since September, early September, as my colleague Ray McNish pointed out, the flow of the Kern River was halted, authorized by the City of Bakersfield to prepare for river channel maintenance and veer repair or reconstructions. In this time, thousands of fish have died within one week and are still dying, some trapped in shallow pools silently dying, and I've witnessed this, too, among them native species at the Sacramento sucker. And we saw them trying to actually get over the veer at Stockdale Bridge, but they were trapped there because there was no fish ladder. This is a native fish. Okay, and this is also violating Fish and Game Code 5937 and 5901. Furthermore, I want to point out that shallow puddles of the Kern River water make a perfect breeding ground for the Aedes aegypti mosquitoes, a carrier of the West Nile breeding ground for the Aedes aegypti mosquitoes, a carrier of the West Nile virus, which we are all concerned about, there are cases in California. When all mosquito fish are dead in shallow puddles, mosquito larvae can still thrive in oxygen-depleted water that is above 90 degrees Fahrenheit.
Ms. Lauer, your time is up. Can you bring your comments to a close, please?
I contacted Public Health, but there was no response.
Thank you, Ms. Lauer. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Mary Helen Barrow, followed by Zita Doroteo.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Go, members of the council and staff. First, I want to thank you, Mayor Go and Andre Gonzalez, for being at the 9/11 ceremony this morning. It was beautiful. And a lot of people here may not know, but the sister of one of the stewardesses on that plane that hit one of the towers has lived all her life here in Bakersfield, Ms. Ong and her husband Ed Herrera. So they're local folks, just because the plane hit in New York, but they were Bakersfield people that died on that plane. Thank you. Also, I came here because the city recently did some work on Sacramento Street next to my property, and the plumbing is leaking. I told them about it, they still left it that way. So anytime my neighbors, myself, and if our sprinklers run, water runs down the street, and sometimes water runs down the street even when we don't put our sprinklers on. It's the pipes are not sealed properly, okay? And also, I'm going to request the city to evaluate whether we can have speed bumps on Sacramento Street. I was, I'm a retired teacher. We have Longfellow School at the end of our block there, and mothers walking the children to Longfellow School, and sometimes they have strollers, and there are seniors in wheelchairs. One of the seniors in the wheelchair almost got run over because people speed down Sacramento Street to get to Bernard. And, and so we need maybe some speed bumps, a few low-level ones, so that our seniors and mothers and children will be safe going to school and walking in our neighborhood, okay? And then, the other thing that I wanted to support the Kern River effort, because it is so important, you know, having a beautiful river run through your city raises property values, folks. And we really need to have the water stay here, not sold for profit to Southern California buyers, because that's what's been going on.
Ms. Barrow, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Barrow, for your comments today. I'm sorry that I no longer represent you in, on the City Council. You're now part of, part of Ward Three. And, but I will make a referral on your behalf to Mr. Meyer, if we can look at the drainage issues that she cited. I'm hoping that we can address them. And then, to your second point regarding neighborhood traffic, I couldn't agree with you more. People drive too fast in our residential neighborhoods, and in particular, with no regard to schools and in school zones, they drive far too recklessly. And we do have, and we have adopted a Traffic Calming Handbook, Neighborhood Traffic Calming Handbook, for residents to look at and to find treatments to reduce the traffic speed on residential streets. And so I'd like to refer you to that document. I'll send it to you myself, make sure that you have that, and hopefully we can work together with the residents so we can find some ways in which we can calm the traffic on those streets in your neighborhood. It's a beautiful neighborhood, historic part of our city, and we need to protect it. You bet.
Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Zita Doroteo. I'm a parent of two students at Jefferson Elementary. I'm here to address traffic control and our children's safety. I volunteer each morning to cross, as a crossguard at our school at the corner of Lincoln and King Street in front of Jefferson Elementary. Here, we only have one crosswalk that's going across King Street with one stop sign. The other street is a through street with no stop sign at all. On the end of the street, we have a freeway entrance. We have cars speeding through here with no regards to our children, and the cars are going way more over than 30 miles per hour. I've been almost hit countless times trying to cross our children safely through these streets. I have also personally had to push children out of the way of cars not yielding to the small children crossing. I am out there with a stop sign and an orange vest. Last week, I personally witnessed one of our support staff helping crossing the children when I couldn't do it, and it was about five elementary students with parents crossing, almost getting hit by a truck who's coming down where there's no stop sign to make a right-hand turn onto King, where the children are in the middle of the crosswalk already, almost hitting the children and the staff member, and then getting off the truck, wanting to assault our staff member. We also have cars speeding down King Street and making U-turns, almost hitting other cars and students. We need a four-way stop right here on King and Lincoln. We also need speed bumps or some extra resources on these two streets around our elementary to help control this and keep our students safe. We have had multiple car accidents on this street corner in particular, just as the children are getting ready to get out of school. And we are asking for a four-way stop to help us on making the street a little bit more safe for our children. This has been an ongoing problem for years now. This, this now finally needs to be addressed, so please, you know, don't let something happen to our children. Don't let, you know, an accident happen, one of our kids gets seriously injured or killed, before, you know, City of Bakersfield decides to do something and to help, something to help control this. Andre, we met with you last year in the City of Bakersfield, addressing the same issue.
Ms. Doroteo, your time is up. I believe the Vice Mayor wants to make a comment. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Really, again, another example of folks who are driving too recklessly and far too fast, particularly in, in school zones. And so I want to thank you for coming and raising this issue. It is something that we've been working on. I'm going to ask Mr. Meyer, can you update the council and the public, what has been done so far since our meeting with the residents and the parents at Jefferson School last year?
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor Gonzalez, so last year after that meeting, staff did go out, make improvements to ADA ramps and some of the street markings, making it more visible, the yellow ladder crosswalks, those types of improvements. This issue did come up recently with schools starting again, so my staff has already been evaluating the area. The four-way stop at Lincoln and King has come up in discussion, so, and we're also looking at speed humps, Lincoln, King, and Jefferson as well, because there is the park to the north of the school as well. So we're already in the progress or process of looking in that area. I will also add with the on-ramps to 178 off of, I believe it's Lincoln.
Yes.
And Beal being right there, if we try to make any improvements near those on-ramps, it will take more time having to work with Caltrans, but as far as the four-way stop and the surrounding area, we are looking to make improvements.
So what's stopping us, or what are the considerations for this four-way stop?
I don't have that information at that time. Again, this is something that was, we were looking in this area based on recent requests, and that's something that came up, and we can, we're looking into it. I just don't have a hard date as to when we could get that installed.
If I may, Council, or Vice Mayor as well, as we discussed this, and again, just in the last couple of weeks, because it's come up again, we acknowledged to the community and to the council that the timeline has been too long on this, because we did have a community meeting a year ago. We had some good follow-ups coming out of that. There's a lot going on with public works around traffic safety and traffic calming. We've done numerous projects throughout the city, but I think, you know, Mr. Mayor even had acknowledged to me that, you know, we, we could have done more to address this sooner, but it's a high priority for staff at this point, under his direction now as our interim director.
Okay. So I'm going to, I'm going to make a referral tonight, that we work within the next 30 days to install speed humps within the neighborhood, or some alternative to reduce traffic within that area, and that we get a response to Jefferson parents and teachers and the school community within the next 30 days of our traffic studies or whatever considerations we're making in order to meet warrants to get those four-way stops in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doroteo, and to all of the parents who are here from Jefferson School. Next speaker, please.
Kelly Damian, followed by Anna Rivera and Alex Shawin.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Kelly Damian. I'm here on behalf of the river, and for anybody who's here tonight, who's also here on behalf of the river, will you please raise your hand? So take a look, guys. We're here, we're talking to you. We have signed petitions, we have recorded songs, created art, submitted photos, shown up in courts, sent emails, spoken to the State Water Resources Control Board, come to City Council. We are talking to you, and our message is very clear. We want our river back. It is not an easy task. We are up against a lot. We're up against climate change, a vast network of canals, we're up against a highly-financed industry, but really, the most difficult thing that we are up against is an old way of thinking. That is, that a drop of water only has value if it can be converted into a dollar. That we must sacrifice our well-being and our community in order to have jobs. This is not true. But many in our town have lived their whole lives under this misunderstanding. They watched their river die, and they thought it was for something, but it was an empty sacrifice. What we need from you, our city leaders, is wise, persistent, and cooperative effort. We need our city council members, the city manager, the city's attorneys, the head of the Parks Department, the head of the Water Department, to work together to create a healthy, flowing river. We need our city leaders to reach out to another taxpayer-funded body, the Kern County Water Agency, to get them to work for the river instead of against it. We need our city leaders to advocate on our behalf with the water agencies that hold rights to the river.
Ms. Damian, your time is up. Could you bring your comments to a close, please?
Okay. What I want you guys to do tonight is I want you to look at this group that is gathered here in front of you, and what we represent here tonight is collaborative effort, stubborn love, and dogged persistence, and we expect the same from you as our leaders. Thank you.
Councilmember Arias. Just a reminder again, and I'm not going to do this again, please. This portion of the meeting, we don't have applause. Thank you for being passionate, but we just don't allow that. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to say my comments towards the end, because I'm sure there's additional speakers who are going to come up and potentially talk about this issue, but I think this last speaker hit the nail, you know, right on the head. The fact is, we need greater communication on all fronts, and we have heard you loud and clear in this chamber, on social media, in the paper, and I just want to commend everyone, including a good friend of mine, Mr. Harry Love. Thank you so much for all that you've done to educate our youth and support our We the People programs throughout the county. But no, thank you for your continued advocacy on this important effort. I think we share a brain on many of these issues, and I think that we could be doing a significantly better job at communicating what it is that we are doing, and also talk about the ways that you all are helping inform our decision-making at the City of Bakersfield. So I also think, though, this conversation must, must also include some of the other challenges that we're facing throughout the city, namely, some of the homeless encampments that we find along the river, which not only cause issues for folks who are, you know, walking, biking, enjoying, you know, the river recreationally, but also the damage that it could potentially pose to some of the wildlife and the trees in the area, the shrubbery, because we do have to send in, at times, equipment and trucks, et cetera, into those encampments and those spaces to clean up some of the mess there. And so I think that it would be great, we've done this for other issues throughout the city, I think it would be great if we set up some sort of standing meeting between our city departments, whether that be Water Division, our Code Enforcement Officer, Leeds, our Parks and Recreation Department, and work with, you know, this is not an exhaustive list, but many of the folks who are in the room, including some of the professors at CSU Bakersfield from Kern Community College District, some of the advocates who have been coming, every single meeting, it seems like, talking about this very issue. And let's talk to them on the front end. In many cases, they are the experts on these issues, and they should at least be informed of how we're thinking through some of these challenges. 3,000 fish dead in the river is a failure on our part, and I think we could do better, and we have to do better. So that's going to be my referral. I'll ask that we make this a standing meeting and loop in our community on this issue. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Oh, Councilmember Smith, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to commend the community for all the work for trying to get water in the river. And for two years, we've had a beautiful river through Bakersfield, and it has been a different city because of that. I just, and I know the advocates understand that the reason there's no water in the river today is because the courts had an injunction that water would continue to flow in the river, and that injunction was appealed by the Ag districts and was successful in the appeal, so that the courts have determined that the City of Bakersfield, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff, that we are to operate the river per the agreements, the contracts with the Ag districts. We ran what water we had, what water we have rights to, as long as we could. We saved some water in Lake Isabella in case it's a dry year for domestic use. We want water in the river, and I agree, if we can work with Ag districts, work with the water agency, and somehow make it happen, and I love the community involvement, but the City of Bakersfield didn't just randomly shut the water off. We, as much as you, and the council has for years, since I've been on and before, voted to try and use various means, State Water Board, lawsuits to get more water in the river, and have not been successful yet, but we will continue with you to work in that direction.
Mr. Nero, Mr. Clerk, would you like to add anything to that?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a few additional thoughts. I would confirm, you know, publicly what Councilmember Smith has shared, is that it is true that we are obligated by court direction to continue to operate the river as outlined in the historical agreements. I would also reiterate that the city, from May through August, we chose to run on what rights we had to water through the river, through all of those months. At this point, the reality is, is if I could just put it very bluntly, is the city really has no water to run through the river that is ours. There's very limited surface water that still goes to the treatment plants for domestic use, but it is, it is a trickle by comparison. And so, again, I would acknowledge that we could have communicated better about this issue, that we could work with our partners about this issue, but the reality is, is we don't have water as a city to run through the river. It is a bit of a challenge with, you know, an alluvial river area to maintain some of those flows, you know, year over year, but we do believe that through coordination and cooperation of the many individuals that have rights to that water, that it can be done. That has been the council direction, that has been staff's action, and we, we also want to see water in the river, regardless of the maintenance that's going to be done that has been referenced in even some of our own materials. There wouldn't be water in the river, because again, we don't have water to put in the river, and so we're taking advantage of the opportunity to do the maintenance, but if we had partners that were willing to put water through the river, that would be the priority first. Also, I would just state a couple of points of clarity, that even with our management of the river under the agreements, that there is essentially no water that leaves Kern other than in very extreme water years like 2023, there were very small amounts that went into the state water project, but by and But by and large, you know, 98% of the time, water does not leave Kern. We do not sell our water to Southern California. Sometimes the city sells our water to water agencies here within Kern for water banking and groundwater recharge. But water does not leave Kern. I think I would just reflect as well that, you know, the city actions that Councilmember Smith had pointed out in prior years of legal actions, as well as legal actions in recent years. I think it's pretty evident where the city's position on this topic is. And we, we look forward to working with partners, again, to continue to see water in the river. And while we do have the opportunity to advocate as a city agency, there is also the possibility, and I think it would be helpful for our partners to advocate directly to those agencies. They have public meetings with public comment at which they can be advocated as well, while we continue to give our full weight to that advocacy as well.
Thank you, Ms. Geno. Do you wish to add anything?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, again, as the city attorney, I would like to underscore exactly what Councilmember Smith has indicated to you, as well as the city manager. And I'll be a little bit more blunt than the city manager. But I would encourage you to go to Kern Delta. They have public meetings. And talk to them about why you want water in the river. I would encourage you to go to North Kern and go to their public meetings and be as, be as direct with them as you have been with us. And I'm sure that you will continue to be direct with us. But the city attorney's office and the council is doing everything that it can do to keep water in the river. And at the same time, make sure we don't get sued for violating our contracts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Finish. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just reiterate what Councilmember Smith said. We want water in the river. We want water in the river. We understand the environmental, ecological benefits. We understand the quality of life benefits. We have ourselves, from this dais, articulated many of the arguments as to why we need water down the river. And so there's many of us on this dais who share your same vision and hope. And, but what I like to do is kind of turn the table and say, what is it that we can do as a city to join in on the fight? And as we continue to engage and pursue more water down the river, what way, in what ways can we continue to, continue to join our community in sharing with Kern Delta and with North Kern, the City of Bakersfield's priority to run river, water down the river?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I think we're doing exactly that. And specifically, this council has taken a very active stance in going to the State Water Resources Control Board. We have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money to go to the State Water Resources Control Board and advocate for 50,000 to 90,000 acre feet of additional water to go down the Kern River. That decision, I thought, was going to be coming out from the State Water Resources Control Board, I believe, in December of last year. We are still awaiting that decision. So I would indicate to the public that your staff, as well as the city attorney's office, we are doing whatever we can do to meet that goal, that mission of the council and members of the public. But at the same time, realize that we have historical contracts that we must honor until and unless the court excuses those contracts. And we are not there yet. So it is a delicate balancing act. And again, I think as both you and Councilmember Smith indicated, we are dealing with an alluvial river. And we have enjoyed the beauty of that river from bank to bank for the last three or four years. And we are now seeing what happens when it dries back. And that, that is simply the nature, that is the nature of our river.
I would just add a couple of points to the city attorney, agree with everything that she shared. We also recognize there's opportunities with some of our long-range planning efforts. We've got our Kern River Element that's being developed as part of our general plan update. And the information that goes into that Kern River Element will reflect the feedback that we've been receiving from the community, as well as the case that we'd like to make for water in the river. And there may be, you know, other opportunities as legislation comes forward or as grants come forward, that, you know, we, we work together on those topics. But some of the, the planning and collaboration can be beneficial in addition to the legal fights that have been ongoing.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. You know, I believe that in order for us to be good partners with the community, we all need good information and share some baseline of real facts. And so I just want to kind of go through very quickly some, a series of questions to help all of us in the community and on the dais, understand the issue a little bit more clearly. From March to August, there's a, there's a season we call the Miller-Hagan season, correct? Can you describe that just briefly? What, the Miller-Hagan season?
I'll do my best, but I can invite other staff to, to help. The Miller-Hagan season is when the largest portion of runoff water that's coming, you know, into our overall water basin, Isabella's filling up. That means it's a time of the year in which more water rights and access to water is available. And we have the ability to, to use that water. We could send it to treatment plants and other retention areas like Truxton Lakes. But also, we can choose to run it down the river. This year, we ran it down the river. And again, we're fortunate with so much of that water, again, in a wet year, this last, you know, water year, that we were able to see 80,000 acre feet recharged into groundwater by running it through the river. But that's essentially what the Miller-Hagan season is.
And we measure river flow by CFS, or cubic feet per second?
Correct.
What was the CFS during the Miller-Hagan season? Again, March through August?
I'm not 100% clear, but...
Would you like staff? Ms. Budak? Mr. Clegg, would you like her to come forward?
Yes, please, thank you.
Ms. Budak? Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Go and Council. I don't have the exact numbers, but on average, during Miller-Hagan season, our approximate average daily CFS was just over 300 CFS a day during those six months. It's higher in the months of April through July, and then August and September, it does significantly reduce. It's based on inflow. So as the winter storms come in, they go up into the Kern Basin. And then during the summer, the heat comes in. It starts melting, and the runoff comes in. And the greatest amount of runoff is between March and the end of August.
So then on September 1st, what was the CFS?
So for the, for the City of Bakersfield specifically is what I was referring to for the March through August, the 300 CFS for the city. September 1, our CFS drops to between 20 and 30 CFS. And the 20 and 30 CFS we use for our treatment plants, which is about 25 CFS a day as it stays warm. And then 10 CFS we've been delivering to Truxton Lakes.
And is that flow because of our maintenance operations, as was stated in the press release? Or is that other considerations?
So we utilize the time when we do have the reduced flow to take the opportunity to do maintenance projects. The press release that was presented emphasized the maintenance projects to inform the city. In May, we did advise that we would operate the river with Kern River flows through Labor Day. So we did advise through the first press release that we were going to reduce flows after Labor Day, which we did on September 3rd. The flows were reduced because of our availability of water. But with the opportunities, with the reduced flows and the dryback, we were able to then discuss the importance of maintenance and also the reconstruction of our Kern River Canal backup weir.
And just for reference, what is the flow, the inflow into the Lake Isabella Dam? At this period?
Yesterday's inflow was, I believe I looked at it, it was 294 into Isabella. So again, the, as everything's melting, the amount of snow up there is reducing. And so we are getting reduced inflows into Isabella. Towards the earlier part of the month, it was around, it's ranged between 300, 350, and then as low as 298 yesterday.
Thank you.
If I could, I would just like, of the 300 that comes in, how much are we, the city, entitled to?
So if the first 300 CFS every day goes to Kern Delta, and then after that, it's distributed to the, the right holders. And so if it's above 300, say 350, we may get up to 28, 29. If it's less than 300, typically, we don't get anything. Of course, there's other obligations that make it more, a little bit more complicated. But pretty much, we get anything more than 300, less than 300 CFS, we don't, we don't get water.
And that 300 is diverted north, up high in the river?
At what point?
So typically, Kern Delta will take their water upstream of, it's off of the Rocky Point weir into the Carrier Canal, which is up near Hart Park. Or, I'm sorry, just downstream of Hart Park.
Ms. Geno, anything else?
No, Mayor, I think you've painted the picture that I want the public to see, that that water, the bulk of that water is going to the ag districts and does not make it down, does not make it all the way down to where we have been lucky enough to see it in the last three years. And particularly at this time of year.
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Ms. Budak. Go ahead and sit down. Next speaker, please.
Anna Rivera.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Anna Rivera, and I'm the principal at Jefferson Elementary. I'm here today with several staff, parents, and community members of Jefferson. We are here to voice our concerns regarding this traffic safety within our community. Let me begin by giving you a brief history of Jefferson. Their school was built in 1917, over 100 years ago. During that time, there were no freeways. Traffic was non-existent. Area was mostly houses and fields. Let's fast forward till today. Expansion has occurred. The area has evolved. Yet traffic safety around the area has not. Cars drive over the speed limit without any concerns of pedestrian safety. On Bill Avenue, our crossguard and pedestrians are playing Frogger each morning and afternoon just to get to and from school. On King Street, there's the only, the only safe route to drop off students. However, with that being said, in the entrance of the freeway, speeding continues. On the corner of Lincoln and King, there are only a two-way stop, allowing cars going east to west, the belief that they do not have to be cautious while driving. On Jefferson and King, there is no crossing guard, yet over 100 families cross there every day. It is my staff and the parent volunteers that risk their lives daily to ensure students make it safe to and from school. I have pleaded with the city for their support, and that has fallen on deaf ears. In 2021, I wrote to the Public Works Manager to conduct a survey around Bill Street for a light. They, their response that we met two out of three criterias. The one, not enough pedestrians crossing the, during the busy time. It just boggles me that more affluent areas around Bakersfield get more needs met. For instance, northwest, where I live, Mohawk, northbound of Olive, by the church, there are several speeding bumps. Yet the area around there does not experience what we experience every day. Off Arena, by Veteran School, there is a four-way stop. Again, the traffic is nowhere near the amount that we have. Hopefully, sorry, I'm trying to finish.
Go ahead and bring your comments to a close, Ms. Rivera.
Thank you. Hopefully, you changed the way we feel about what the city feels about us as a small district, sorry, a small school. We are asking for you to reevaluate our safety concern and needs. Bill Street, we need a traffic light by Jefferson and 178 exit ramp. A four-way stop on Lincoln and King, and painted crosswalk around all four walking directions. Speed bumps on King Street from Lincoln to Bernard. Please do not wait until someone is hurt or life is lost due to the negligence of responding to the concerns of your community.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rivera. Next speaker, please. So we finished this segment, all 20 minutes of it. Do we have any, Madam Clerk? Moving on now to the next section.
Consent calendar items 7A through 7I for approval.
Thank you. Colleagues, do any of you wish to?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. We did non-agenda items. Do we have any public speaking for agenda items?
We do not have any cards.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you. Let's just wait until the chamber's clear. Thank you all for your participation today, and we value your input. Okay, while they're doing that, does anybody wish to recuse themselves or move anything for separate consideration? Vice Mayor?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Item was approved with Councilmember Weir and Councilmember Core absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Hearings, item 9A, public hearing to consider resolution adopting sewer connection fees for fiscal year 2024-25.
Thank you. Our next item is public hearings. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side. So it's important that you identify yourself, make your statement succinctly, so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to staff's recommendation first, and we'll hear from those who'd like to speak in favor of staff's recommendation. If there's testimony from both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screen behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash, indicating your time is up. Quickly enter statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk, and she'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Public hearing to consider resolution adopting sewer connection fees for fiscal year 2024-25.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just to provide a little bit of context to this item, this was on a prior council agenda. We continued the public hearing to ensure that we did outreach with our community stakeholders. We've had several meetings with community stakeholders, and particularly our development community, to understand the rationale. I think by the size of individuals in chambers tonight at this point, it's reflective of the fact that we went and did that additional stakeholder outreach, and we're thankful that we, we did to make sure our partners understood the approach that we were taking to some, you know, fairly overdue and deferred adjustments. With that context, I'll invite our Water Department Director, Chris Budak, to provide an overview of what this action item represents.
Welcome, Ms. Budak.
Good evening, Mayor Go and Council. The Water Department is requesting an increase to the sewer connection fee. We have a short presentation that will provide additional information about the fee and the need for the increase. I would like to invite Yvette Roldan to the Assistant Director of Water Department to provide that presentation today, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions. Yvette?
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Hoping to provide some context for the resolution regarding the sewer connection fees. So a quick overview. Do I need a clicker? Sewer connection fees are a type of impact fee. They are a one-time charge meant to reimburse city for costs associated with providing capacity for growth. So it is a true reimbursement cost for the city. The city has already incurred and paid these costs. Typical things that are get considered into this is sewer lines that have already been put into place for future connections, expansion of treatment plants, things like that. They are paid when a building permit is issued. They are paid when a building permit is issued. Again, just one time, first, when the building permit is issued. They are calculated using utility valuation of city facilities. So essentially, we take, we calculate the value of the total infrastructure required to take wastewater from a resident, a commercial business, through the collection system, to the treatment plants, all the way to the final disposal point at our Plan Two and Plan Three treatment facilities. Once the value is calculated, we divide it up by the number of users and basically calculate a unit cost. Here we have a table showing connection fees going back to 2009. So as you see, the last time we increased the unit cost, flow BOD, TSS, was back in July 1st of 2010. So it has been a while. We did adjust the cost for commercial and residential, starting July 1st of 2017. The last increase was July 1st of 2021. So it has been a while since these have been touched. That last column there is to show comparison. So a typical approach that cities will take is they do a thorough assessment, calculate the connection fees, and then they just increase it by a construction index between, you know, thorough evaluations. Had the city done that, had we taken that approach, starting in 2009, using that construction cost index increase, we would be, we would have a connection fee upwards of 7,000, opposed to our current 5,000. This is an approach that, as the city manager mentioned, we did outreach. One of our outreaches was Home Builders Association, and they were actually, you know, when we kind of presented this, they're like, they stated that they would have appreciated something like this, opposed to, you know, a big increase every once in a while. A gradual increase was their preferred method. So we would like to take them up on that methodology suggestion. Lastly, connection fees, the ones we are being proposed, these are the unit costs that we calculated using that valuation approach that we described. So proposed unit cost for flow would go up to $27 gallon per day, BOD 1,438, TSS 737. So these are the unit cost components that we then use to calculate. We basically multiply it out using standard industry practices to come up with the residential fee, and then a commercial connection fee. So the connection fee being proposed is 6,947 for residents, residential. And again, these are for new, new connections. So, commercial, 278 per fixture. And industrial users, a note about industrial users, this is as we define them in the wastewater industry, which is as EPA defines them. So these, we only have about 20 in the city jurisdiction boundary, and they are existing. We don't have any new commercial, new industrial users on the horizon. They get charged based on their wastewater characteristics. So they provide us their flow, their BOD, and their TSS. We use the unit cost to multiply out and develop a connection fee for them. Lastly, just a comparison using the residential fee. Our current is 5,000. We are proposing 6,947, which still puts us pretty low if we compare it to our surrounding areas and comparable entities around us. So with that, questions or comments?
Thank you. Mr. Clegg, anything further before we go to the public?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, hearing 9A is open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? You can go ahead and sit down. Please come forward at this time. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Please step to the microphone. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Does anybody wish to comment? Councilmember Smith? Oh, no. Vice Mayor?
Move to adopt a resolution.
You have a motion? Please cash your votes.
Motion was approved with Councilmember Weir and Core absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and Mayor's statements.
Councilmember Gray.
Well, good evening, everyone, staff, city manager, Mayor, thank you. Today, I had the, also the blessing of being at the 9/11 ceremony. And again, I was so extremely proud of our city. I'm proud of our patriotism. I had the opportunity to talk to some schoolchildren from Reagan School, Elementary School, and that just lit me up. Those children were so engaged, so glad that they were there, so willing to participate and talk to me, and how much they really appreciated it. And these are little children that didn't know anything about 9/11. So I left there with hope again for the future of this country, that we can continue to teach our children how great our country is. Teach them the, what this country, the founding principles of our country, of our founders, our constitution, we will have a strong country. So anyway, I just want to give a shout out to the Bakersfield Police Department, to Bakersfield Fire Department, what excellence they proved that our city operates under. I was just amazed at how well the whole thing went. So anyway, thank you for Bakersfield, to Bakersfield PD and the Fire Department, and to Reagan School, the principal that allowed those kids to get on a bus and come. The other shout out I want to give to is our new retail theft department. I actually witnessed a theft in one of our local businesses just two days ago. In fact, I was so nice to the guy when he came in the door, I thanked him for stopping in the parking lot for me, because I thought he was just a regular patron that was going in to, to, you know, do business. And as I turned around, he's stealing off the shelves. I'm like, oh my gosh. I told city manager this yesterday, I said, this was unbelievable. But so I took the time to talk to the general manager of the store and said, are you, are you all having this problem on a, you know, a regular basis? And she said, oh, yeah. She said, we've had three different hits. And I said, well, did you realize that Bakersfield Police Department now has a retail theft department? And she said, yes, I know all of them by name. And the good news is that one organized theft ring that came through, they were able to arrest, they're in jail for quite some time. And then a second one, they were able to arrest, and they're in jail. So two out of three, our retail theft department is doing an excellent job. I just want to give a shout out to Bakersfield Police Department again. We have a lot to be proud of in this city, and a lot to be proud of. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Ari, with a little technical glitch, I wasn't sure whether that was an old one.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be short and sweet. Oh, no. And I think he already exited the room. I just wanted to give a quick shout out and congratulations to two fine gentlemen, Mr. Anthony Valdez and Rick Anthony, who have recently been promoted to assistant city manager positions. These two gentlemen are emblematic of what we should be looking for as workers of the city, but also at the highest of levels. You know, just no challenge, too big, nor too small. And Anthony in particular is probably one of the most knowledgeable people in the entire county on anything related to homelessness and affordable housing. Rick, on the other hand, is an incredible leader who has really changed the culture within the Parks Department. And in talking to many of his staff, I have some concerns about whether or not they're going to stay without him there at the helm. But Rick has been incredible spearheading the master plan and has led the charge on the revitalization effort of MLK Park. So I just want to say congratulations to those two fine gentlemen, and I'm excited about the future with the two of them supporting Christian and also Gary Helen for his amazing work. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. My comments are about the schools and the safety around the schools, because we talk about this a lot. We've had a lot of public speakers over the last couple of years tell us about problems around specific schools. And I hope the lady tonight who spoke, that staff, will we follow up with her? Because, you know, she had specific needs, and I love it when they tell us something specific, a specific school, because we really won't know if the public won't tell us. There are eyes and ears here, so it's important they know when they come to take the time to come down, point out, you know, a serious problem that we'll follow up, and maybe, maybe sometimes the information's wrong, we correct it, but maybe a lot of times they have good ideas, you know, we can put some stop sign, but we can address the problem. But since we talk about this so often, I wanted to ask staff, and I, maybe this is a planning and development committee thing, maybe, maybe it's a city manager can decide, but I think we should study the traffic calming that we need to do for safety around all future schools when we, they come to Velveur, I've been involved in this, the school district demands, I want it there, they're very rigid, they need bans. However, I think we can have some say in the street designs around schools, which I think we need to modify from our normal street designs, what I'm getting at. And I don't know if that's within a half a mile of school, both directions, that's stuff that staff can, can figure out. But speed limits, we need a menu of things, but I, I'd like us to look at changing the street design itself, most of them of the high schools and middle schools, and most of them are on arterial roadways, okay? Really bad, really dangerous. The only way we will make them safer is, in my opinion, beside speed limits, which I don't even think we have on these, you know, on arterials. I mean, you go, you go by the big arterials, I don't remember seeing slow to 25 miles an hour like in elementary, and those are good. But I'm not sure that, first, if we do future projects, if it's an arterial, then I think we need to modify it down to a collector within a certain distance of a school. And all the other traffic coming, so you take a lane out, you know, so they do that on a freeway, everybody really has to slow down, but you take a lane out, they're going to go slower, along with other landscape features and things that we can do to slow the traffic down. Speed limits, sometimes speed bumps, but when they're going to be on arterials, new designs, I think we should look at within a certain distance, we're going to go to a collector around those schools in all directions. Think of the high schools. Well, you need to slow it down. I don't know what you do with the extra lane that's been dedicated, maybe you can make angular parking. I mean, the front thing, I'm sure you'll find great uses for it. But when you go from three to two, plus severe speed limits, and hopefully, there's a stop sign or a light, you're going to slow the traffic down. And you can, you can widen it back up once you get a quarter mile from the school, whatever it is, but you will have to slow down if we're going to continue to have them arterial. So it won't be an arterial anymore for that thing. Same with, with a middle school. In elementary schools, it's probably, they shouldn't be allowed ever to be in an arterial. But even the collector, you can narrow that down to one lane within a quarter mile. But I think the design of this street is where we have to go to. And, you know, you could retrofit, we could do this with existing schools. I know it's a big study, it costs a lot of money, but that's why I'd like you to study it. But we could take existing schools that are on arterials, and we could go back and we could take that lane out, I mean, sort of like the striping we did with bicycles, but we could take that lane out, and you all of a sudden have two lanes instead of three, and post these people, and all the time it's going like this. Because, I mean, you look at, I mean, these things are in front of arterials with traffic lights, and it is a freeway with, and these people aren't just going 55. It's, it's, you know, you're talking about just, something's really horrifying. And that's what we have around a lot of our high schools. So we could, if we had the money or the will, we could modify streets right now around middle schools and around high schools to go to one lane, I mean, to two lanes instead of one, and other street calming things from the catch you have, which this isn't the only thing. But I think in the end, as long as you have three lanes going down that in front of the high schools, and, which means it's arterial, very fast traffic, you're going to have a problem. So I kind of wonder if we could look at, for the future, when we design a street and approve it with a school, and if we ever had the money to look at, maybe it's the most dangerous situation, we have high schools, where we could take a lane out. At this point, if it's already there, you stripe it, you know? That's about all you'd have to do. If it's not built yet, you can have landscaping. But just the street design around schools needs to be examined for safety, to lower the speeds, and just the way you lower speeds, you start taking lengths out. So anyway, that's my comment for tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I would just agree with what Councilmember Freeman was talking about. And last couple of days, I've been bicycling up and down Buena Vista, and we have Stockdale High School right there on Beebe and White Lane, and that is the exact situation you're talking about. So we've, we've done it, and it's working. So good idea.
Ironically, I'll give it to you, that it kind of works in front of the high school there. Apply it to all these high schools we have in town, they're at the intersection of two arterials, and it's just a really dangerous situation.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I want to echo this point that Councilmember Freeman is making. I think it's really, really critical that we address the issue. I know there's, you know, hundreds of schools in metro Bakersfield, but I think if we prioritize first, what I'd like to see, us prioritizing those elementary schools, particularly in the urban core where they've had chronic issues. And we've heard from already Jefferson, Williams, William Penn, Roosevelt, Fremont, I mean, the list goes on and on. Those are just in, in my ward, and I know other wards also have schools that have these problems. So we need to prioritize what we're going to do overall. And I'd like to send this to the Multimodal and Traffic Safety Committee and ask that committee really take this on as a high priority, if not the highest priority, for the remainder of the year and going into 2025. Because they are right. We can't wait for a tragedy to happen with a child, and these families are getting frustrated, and they're scared. So anything we can do, as much as we can do, as quickly as possible, would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we stand adjourned at 6:43.